Good morning.
Good morning.
The time is now nine forty and our quorum of the board is present. The State Board of Education meeting of April tenth, two thousand and twelve is hereby called to order. If we can start with the first item, which is approval of agenda and order of priority. Your motion, please.
Support.
Nancy and supported by Cassandra. Any changes, deletions, additions? They all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same? Thank you. And Merz, if you do board introductions and your normal thing.
Welcome to the State Board of Education meeting. To my immediate left is Michael Flanagan. He's State Superintendent of Public Instruction and is Chairman of the Board. To his left is John Austin, President of the Board. John resides in Ann Arbor. Cassandra Ulrich is next. She's the Vice President of the Board. She's from Rochester Hills. Nancy Danhoff is the Board Secretary. She's from East Lansing. Kathleen Strauss is from Detroit. Next to Kathleen is Paul Gallemsky. He's the Michigan Teacher of the Year for this year. He's a Career and Technical Education teacher in Oakland County. Business marketing and management. Across the table, Greg Tetter. He's the Governor's Strategic Advisor. Next to him is Eileen Weisler, State Board of Education member from Ann Arbor. Next to Eileen is Dan Varner, Chair, and he is from Detroit and he's joining us on the telephone today. Hello, Dan.
Hello.
Oh, good morning, Dan.
Good morning, all.
And as you come closer to me, Richard Ziley. He's the Board's NASC representative and he's from Dearborn. And next to me is the Board's Treasurer, Mary Ann Yarimagwire. She is from Detroit. Thank you.
Thank you, Merz. And thank all our guests for joining us today. It's always nice to have some folks interested in our items. We have two exciting items today, but before we get to that, you probably know that this is the month of the young child, so I thought I would unabashedly just show one. Now, that's our new grandson, Will. And I'm reading him War and Peace. We're not --
[laughing]
We're going right to the big stuff. We're not fooling around with -- but if you notice, some of the balloons around and with our new Great Start Department that Susan Bromen leads, so they're kind of out in the --
Purple tee off.
Out in the office area. Particularly, our Great Start Department has really put those together. And this is a really important month and maybe more than ever in our history as a department because I appreciate the governor's move to consolidate those from many different departments into our department, including some eighty or so funding streams. And we think it's really going to make a difference for our young people, which in turn is going to help our teachers who are -- my daughter's a teacher, as you know, and I think are somewhat overly stressed in the rapid reforms that have happened. And I think it's hard for them to be solely responsible for student achievement if we're not really doing the job that we can do from prenatal on. So we're happy to celebrate it this month, particularly because of the new work we have with Susan's Department. I wear my finance suit today. I don't wear this that often, but I thought, you know, this is like a Wall Street-looking suit that I'm not entirely comfortable in, but I thought since we got finance on the program today and I --
It's not a power tie.
It's not a power tie?
Yeah.
Oh, it is? But I have more to say about the finance suit when we get to that item. But I think it's great that John and the board are getting this on the table to start our discussions today on finance and innovations. But our first item, speaking to my daughter, who's a teacher, she's actually subbing for someone on maternity leave because she's going to graduate with her Masters in Counseling next month, but I guess has just enough to be able to fill in for a few weeks with a fellow teacher who's on maternity leave. So it's interesting to hear her view of this world as she's experiencing firsthand as a young teacher. And I'd be interested in this item myself, and both as a State Superintendent, but, excuse me, also as a dad. And with that in mind, just a few kind of opening comments. And I'm probably biased a bit because of Krista's conversations with me the last year or so. But, boy, when we're at a point where it's almost six hundred to one on average in terms of our counseling ratios, and I think it's almost ironic that at the very time we have budget issues that have pushed some districts into making budget decisions related to counselors, it's almost the worst time that we could imagine, certainly in my professional life, to have those numbers so high. And that may be the essence of a lot of the problems that we're going to discuss today. But today's really meant, based on the board's request, to update the status of implementing the school counselor standards. Those were approved in two thousand and ten. And as I said, the counselors now are charged with scheduling and academic advising and providing professional support service to students in serious areas such as identity crisis, suicide awareness prevention, I mean, really significant issues. And this whole discussion might raise the question about the need to consider a tiered system where counselors are supported by technicians, in effect, almost the way we have in the medical profession, where we triage in a way that we have the best-trained folks who are really able to deal with it in a truly professional counselor way, and then perhaps college access technicians. My understanding is that MCAN, you know, has agreements with districts where they're making sure it's not at the expense of counselors that are already in place, and I think that's really smart. So at any rate, Sally and Flor are going to join us and present. And then we'd like the board to, as always, feel comfortable for any comments, questions, you know, to have a full discussion here today. I think this started with Cassandra asking for some --
Right. And if I could just add something for a second at the top. Thank you. First of all, is Patrick O'Connor here yet?
Uh, yes.
Yes, great. So this is really -- Patrick had contacted us a few months ago. He's with the Michigan Association of College Admission Counselors, I believe. And they had sent -- what you're getting right now is something that they had forwarded to us, which were some recommendations, because there were some concerns among those who are in the field now that those who are in the preparation programs are not getting enough training when it comes to actually getting our young people into college. And so that's kind of where we are right now, and so we're sending around the recommendations that they had made. But really, I wanted to thank Patrick for bringing this to our attention. So, thank you.
Sally, please. And maybe you can bring us from where we were, including the board's adoption of these in two thousand and ten and then some current thinking, too.
So, good morning. As Mike mentioned, the board did approve the counseling standards almost two years ago. So it was in two thousand and ten. And some of you with less history with the board may not remember that prior to those standards, there were no standards. So these were not revised standards. These were brand-new standards for counselors. We had been working with rules and some legislation, but we really didn't have standards that would help the teacher prep institutions or what we're beginning to move into as the education preparation institutions to really help them figure out what should be included in those programs. So the standards, I think, were just a critical element in setting up what the teacher prep or the education preparations institution should be doing for the counselors. And as usual, Flor and her staff worked with a number of stakeholders to develop these, and I'm taking a little bit of your thunder, probably, but these were developed with a lot of input from the stakeholders and taken out for public input, et cetera. So Flor is going to give you a little bit more of that history. But we're in the process right now, they were approved in two thousand and ten, so the teacher prep institutions are in the process right now of implementing those and reshaping their programs so that they reflect those standards. And Flor and her staff will be accepting the applications for the program approval by two thousand and twelve, I think you said. And then, as you know, we have a test that goes along with the standards, and so right now we're in the process of also working with our contractor to develop the assessment, which would -- the intention is that will be used in two thousand and thirteen. So you've got two thousand and ten standards developed between two thousand and ten, two thousand and twelve. We give the teacher prep institutions an opportunity to update their programs, and then we start with the assessments on the standards in two thousand and thirteen. That test, by the way, has not been updated for twenty years, so, almost twenty years. So there's progress to do. It may not be perfect, but there's certainly a lot of progress in the way for the counselors, and appreciate Mike's comments about the worth that the counselors have to do. It's just incredible workload for them. They do a great job with a lot of competing demands on their time, and the ratio is, you know, it's really tough to do all that we're expecting them to do with that ratio. But we'll give you where we are. So, Flor?
Okay, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Welcome back.
Thank you very much. Glad to be back. And Sally and Mike have both given you some of the information on school counseling. I just wanted to kind of give you a little bit more of the context of school counseling in Michigan and where we fired it. And first off, the school council rules were adopted in nineteen seventy-one. That's not to say that we didn't have good, solid school council programs prior to that because we know that there were programs prior to that. But it was the first time that the state actually started to say, let's look at this in an organized fashion, try to get some consistency among programs, and work with the institutions to make sure that they are training good school counselors. And so at the time, the requirements included that the applicant had to possess a currently valid Michigan teaching certificate, and it was pretty much just the school counselor endorsement. And they had to complete, successfully complete and approve program, which included eighteen semester credit hours. And you'll see later on how that has evolved. And also, in those rules, they kind of defined what the school counselor role was in the school, and they looked at things like providing counseling to pupils utilizing technology, career development theory, educational information, and occupational information. So these are all the things that a school counselor might do in his or her day, in a given day or a given week. They also design and implement, evaluate guidance and counseling programs. They focus on career, academic, personal, social, and emotional, and developmental needs of all pupils. And that is an important aspect of their job. And one of the things that we also looked at in terms of school counselor is the challenges of having heavy student loads. The recommended, the American School Counsel Association recommends a ratio of two hundred and fifty to one, and that even sounds like a lot. And when they did their study across various states of what that ratio actually looked like, the national average came back as four hundred and seventy-nine to one, and Michigan's average came back at six hundred and thirty-four to one. So, you know, and that's not to say that all schools are like that, but that's an average. So in a larger school district, you may have that average of six hundred to one. One counselor sits six hundred students.
And if I could just interject, that data's from two thousand and five, and we know it's happened to school budgets since then, so I wouldn't be surprised if we had more recent data if that number was significantly higher even than that.
And so, and in terms of that role that the school counselor serves, and it's also important that the school utilizes the school counselor as the school counselors and not have them doing things that really aren't school counselor-type things, like substitute teaching for someone when you have to teach that out for days or walking students down to the counseling office. So in two thousand and six, we revised the administrative rules. And what we did is we looked at the American School Counsel Association's national model. It included aspects of that national model into our administrative rules and into what we wanted eventually to be our school counselor standard. And so that national model does support the K-12 school's overall mission by promoting the academic achievement, career planning, personal and social development of the child. And the school counselors' standards, as Sally said, they were developed working with a group of stakeholders, interested stakeholders. Beatrice Harrison, who's a staff member with me, she and I have been working with the school counselor discussion group for a number of years now. And this is where a lot of these things begin to come from, is people who are in the field, people at the colleges and universities in approved programs, who are working to prepare school counselors, also working with those individuals who work in schools at school counselors, to bring them on board and get input. And so, once we developed the standards, we then brought them to the board, and then we sent them out for public comment to get that back. And we came back to you and said, okay, here's what public comment's in, and everybody kind of agreed with us that these were good standards, that national model was a good one to follow. So that's where we ended up, and you approved those standards for us.
By the way, I think Beatrice has joined us today. For name and a face, Beatrice, please sit at the board. Thanks for all your efforts.
And so now, our next step in the office is to make sure that we get the programs approved in alignment with the standards, and also that we develop the new, a new MTTC Michigan Test for Teacher Certification Content Test for school counselors. And Sally says the test we have is pretty old, so we know that once we do new standards and we get the programs approved, we have to have that new test done. And it takes the testing company about two years in development to do that. And one of the things that we do is we pull together professionals from the K-12 school counseling community. We get college and university representatives, and they can complete what we call Content Validation Survey. And this is a process where they begin to look at the exam questions. Are these questions that are relevant, and at what level of difficulty are they? Are these the right questions that we should be asking in a content test based on those standards? And so, as I said, the new test will be available in two thousand and thirteen, and that will replace that old school counselor exam. So anyone who's going through a school counselor program now will have until two thousand and thirteen, October two thousand and thirteen, to take that old test. The last time the old test will begin will be July of two thousand and thirteen, and so then we'll switch to the new test and those standards that programs will have to follow. Then we looked at, because there was this concern about are we addressing career and college planning, we wanted to take a look at the standards and went back through. And if you, and you have the website for our standards, if you want to really see the complete set of standards there, that website. And three of the five major standards, and fourteen of the substandards do address preparation for career and college planning. And we do have those. We've outlined what those are, and so we will give you that. You can see that. And then in additional, in addition to that, there are a number of resources online that are available to parents and students. If they are seeking this information, additional information on career and college access, school counselors have all of these resources available to them, and we've listed those for you. Some of them, there are even more than this, but these are some of the ones that I pulled out because I know we've had interaction with these. And the Michigan Virtual University's Career Forest, they're online models, one that some of us at the department actually went through and got some of the training and did an exploration of that. The MDE's website, our own website, has a number of resources. There's the Know How to Go Michigan dot org. I don't know if you've seen commercials on TV. There are those commercials that come on at like six in the morning to tell you how to go to college and those are kind of, if you get up early in the morning, you'll see them. You may see them a little bit later in the day, too.
And those are geared towards you?
Yeah, I was just going to say, that's when all the high schools are up at six o'clock in the morning.
You may not have seen it. That's Nickelodeon.
Yeah, they're eating breakfast, right?
They're eating breakfast. If they're watching MSNBC, they're eating breakfast and they're seeing these commercials. And then, of course, the school counselors do plan college day and night programs, career fairs. And they just gone to something that I didn't know about until my son was getting ready to graduate, which is the onsite admissions process, which is the institution actually comes to the school, and they admit students that day. And if they get all of their information in, transcripts ready, all their letters and everything, the institution will actually sit down, that representative will sit down with those students and tell them right then and there if they're admitted to the university. So I think that's a really good thing. It puts you out of that agony of wondering, am I going to get admitted? And waiting in the mail for that letter to come that's real thick, that have a whole bunch of stuff in it, because at the end, you know you didn't get admitted. So at least that was how it was when I was applying. And also, there are resources from the College Board. The United States Department of Education has a number of resources available, such as scholarship searches. FAFSA, which is a free form for scholarships and information that everyone who's going to get any financial assistance for college has to complete. And you saw a big push to have a date where they could get assistance with FAFSA, and they do walk you through. It's a very user-friendly process. If you're not afraid of computer and getting on and doing things, you can get the FAFSA done in a fairly short amount of time. And then the Michigan College Access Program. And I'm sure there are probably others that I don't have listed here. This was just kind of a short list so that you would know and everyone would know that the school counselor does provide a lot of information, but there are a lot of additional resources that are available to parents and students.
Mike?
Tom Freeman, by the way, if you'd wave, who's with our MCAN project here, and we're -- Sally, just speak to that for a moment, or the issues related to federal funding and some of that.
Yeah, the MCAN is a federal grant, and unfortunately, part of the challenge in Michigan is that in order to get that grant, you have to have matching funds and maintenance of effort and all that. And unfortunately for Michigan, we were not able to produce that, given our economic problems. So we're unfortunately going to lose part of that grant, which is unfortunate where we are with looking for career and college readiness for all students. But it's been very, very dynamic throughout the state. They've done a lot of things that's really helping to reach out to students and to parents. So it's unfortunate that the grant will not be continuing.
And we've asked, I mean, I've written Arnie, and I think John and I then co-signed one later, to try to get a waiver around that because we've had the program in place. I should know this, but I don't know the latest status of that.
Tom, how long?
Three years.
Three years?
First year with us.
Say that again.
Yeah. What? So three years?
Three years.
That the program's been running. And then, MCAN with Brandy's been how long?
About the same.
About the same, okay.
The what grant?
What? We're using acronym, sorry. MCAN is the Michigan College Access Network, where they have got, where the ideas to place students around the university areas and try to help the students fill out their application and help them understand that they also can go to college. And then there's the Michigan College Access Program that Tom's been more involved with.
So let's, yeah, Kathy, please, and John, and Nancy.
I just want to clarify a little. So that means we're not going to get these grants, we're not going to be able to keep these grants? Oh, what was it doing? We're not supposed to keep these grants? We can't keep these grants because we don't have enough maintenance of effort or enough money for the match?
Correct. Yeah, I think it was, Greg, do you remember? Was it nine million?
The maintenance effort department?
Yeah, it was a chunk of change.
It was fifty-eight million.
Oh, that's right. It was fifty-eight to leverage, I think, four or nine million was in the channel.
It just isn't a reasonable maintenance. Please, Greg, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
It was fifty-eight million, and it was based on the previous administration's last budget, so it was fiscal year two thousand and eleven, is I think what we're talking about.
That seems really a shame. I mean, we're saying that everybody is supposed to go to college.
It's a huge loss for us.
Or at least higher education, if it's not a four-year college, a two-year college. And then we're not providing the funds that we can access additional money to make it work?
Well, the challenge, Kathleen, is that we needed fifty-eight million dollars to leverage a grant of
Four.
Of four million.
Yeah, this is
Of four millions. I mean, this is the challenge, fifty-eight, so we put fifty-eight million dollars, because this is the maintenance of effort rule. You need fifty-eight million dollars to leverage four million.
And the fifty-eight
Well, that doesn't make sense.
The fifty-eight was what prior? It wasn't just for this, right? This was a level
This was, to be honest with you, this was a decision of the previous administration that made, so I'm not sure what was totally at stake.
Maybe Lisa or Carol.
Fifty-eight million was a big part of that with the tuition assistance to private colleges. That was eliminated a while back. This year, the governor did include two million for the college program to make up for the federal funding, but I believe the Senate has not funded that.
Yeah, in its sub, but I would just say, generally speaking, the administration, we're very supportive of the program. We put it in our executive budget recommendation to the two million dollars, knowing that we weren't going to get the federal match, I think, basically as a way to keep the program up and running, hoping that, so, you know, in the future, we will get our match and we'll be able to continue the program.
So this would be one that, as Lisa reports out, but also as the Legislative Committee with Nancy meets, that these are some of the things when we're meeting with senators anyway, that would be a good one to say, how can we not have this in our budget? You know, the governor's proposed it, the State Board supports it. But you can see the, this is why we wrote Arnie, because it didn't seem reasonable that because the private, the private college funding went down, that somehow it was going to cost us, under their definition, of maintenance of effort. And that's why the numbers are so different, you know, fifty-eight million, you need to save three, four million.
Right, especially when other states don't do any private funding.
Yeah, we got caught in a catch-twenty-two because the maintenance of effort was based on that high year. Most states don't fund the private at all, and as a result, because we did, and now we don't, as of the last year, the Granholm administration, that put us in a spot where technically, we don't have the maintenance of effort. We were trying to get a waiver around that kind of oddity.
So what's the process?
Well, I think if we can influence the Senate, we can use our own funds to keep this in place.
Yeah.
So that's the key. Because we're not, that's what I meant about the status with Arnie, I think, has been denial at this point.
Yeah, we've lobbied the administration pretty heavily, I think, at the staff level. And, you know, they basically said that they're handcuffed on it, and they have, you know, to just follow the law, and it's unfortunate.
And is the two million for the program or the network? The network.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it was John, Nancy, then Richard, or is it on the same, if it's on the same point?
No, it's a different
Okay.
I did just want to make that point. It was great that the governor did ask for money to continue this, and the legislature is trying, at least in part, saying no. And it's, you know, it's another example, I think, of where they're being penny wise but pound foolish. I mean, this is a priority for us as a state to get people to college prepared, so I hope we can continue to encourage funding for this. I don't know how we're wanting to run the discussion of the counselors, though, because I was interested, too, in, we've got some of the counselor leaders here, I know, and I didn't know if they were going to have any opportunity to share perspective on where we need to go with these kinds of counselor standards, too.
Nancy, please.
I think I want to clarify, you're not looking for us to change the standards today.
No.
No, I didn't think so. So what you're looking for is how our, to advise us how this is being implemented and our response to that implementation.
Correct.
Is that correct? So, given that, John, I think that, I think we need to make certain our comments help them in that respect. But I don't want to, did you have more that you wanted to say?
No, I was, I appreciate any discussion about where we're going and how we can support these counselor standards. I did appreciate the fact that some of the leaders of the counselor networks in the state are here, and if either public participation or even if we wanted to make a special opportunity for them to speak as part of this discussion, I surely would be for it.
Yeah, Nancy, please.
Let's, if it's all right, can we give our comments? And then I'd like to hear from them because then that might change some of our comments, too, but I'd like to at least get them on the table.
Yeah.
One of the concerns that I have, and I have to admit that I was part of the board that approved these counseling standards, and sometimes when you approve things and then you see how they're being implemented, then it becomes clear to you what you should have said. I think that's true in life on just about anything, but until you have experience enough to see how it's going, you don't really know what it is that's there. The biggest concern I have here is the vagueness of our standards. And if we're going to base our implementation and helping institutions knowing how to put together programs, what we expect in the criteria for programs for counselors, whether it's, whether if it's a certification or certificate, or whether it's a master's program, my concern is because of the vagueness of the standards, that they can be interpreted in any number of ways but don't actually get where we need to go for counselors. And so I'm wondering, how will we address the need, the very dire need for counselors or their, I'm going to, for lack of a better word, I'm going to call their parapros that we would hope someday to have for them, that would do the nuts and bolts of it in terms of what does it take to start looking at colleges? Where do you go? What kinds of criteria do you have to have to have ready to fill out an application? What tests do you really need to take? What don't you need to take? How do you prepare for them? Where can you get help in preparation? How do you determine what all of these great businesses out there telling you that for a cool eight hundred dollars, I can make sure you can apply for anything and get in anywhere? How, what, where do we provide that information and that ability for our counselors in our standards? Guidance, what does guidance mean? Career, what does career mean? I'm not sure that those really articulate well enough, the concerns that we are seeing. Yes, we have six hundred to one, and that's horrible, but even in the six hundred to one, how do you But even in the six hundred to one, how do you determine as a counselor, what are the critical elements that I can provide? And what are the others that on a good day I might be able to provide? And what are the other things that, you know what, at six hundred to one, it's not going to happen? Because I think that's the reality that we're dealing with here. And so, I'm just wondering how you see this implementation in embracing those kinds of concerns?
Yeah, I think we can include that in the program review part of it, and just say that when they do submit their programs, that they must cover the career and college access information in some course, or courses, the number of courses, prospect counseling curriculum, that has to be there, and also in that internship. So, we can put that in as part of that application process, and make sure that when they do submit those courses, that they're submitting for approval as that program, that shows up in there. And then the reviewers will look for that, they'll know to look for it.
I really appreciate that. I think, just as we do with any of our teachers, any of our educators, if we expect them to be able to provide certain services and content, and don't then provide them the ability to do that, then I think that we have, we have not served them well. And so, I'm hoping that we can make certain that that is a part of the requirements of programs.
Yeah, and I, you know, and I know the recommendation, what I've seen, was to add another course or add two more courses. But rather than add courses, I think we can get added through existing courses or new courses that they want to include in the program, and just say that you have to include this, this must be there, must be present in terms of the review process.
Yeah, and, you know, if they decide that there's so much content that they need to add another course, then, you know, that's their choice, but, yeah.
Yeah, institutions can always add courses whenever they like this.
Yeah, thank you.
Good point, good resolution. Richard, please.
I'd like to ask you, I really appreciate your comment on the vagueness of the position. I'd like you to contrast and compare for me, and identify areas of overlap between the school guidance counselor and the school social worker, and are there any other professionals in this area? Many of us remember going to school, the only time we saw the counselor was for discipline purposes.
Are you saying something about Southside? Well, yes.
Do you want to say a little bit more about that, Richard?
Well, let's just say I hated school until ninth grade, and God has a sense of humor because I became a teacher. But, yeah, other, just, you know, what's the, because out in other professions, there's a big overlap between, you know, marriage counseling, pastoral counseling, personal counseling, what a social worker does, what a guidance counselor does, what other professionals do we have, on the vagueness of the thing. I mean, obviously, as the position's been described in the presentation, you're going to have your biggest impact in high school, and if the six hundred to one is a pre-K to twelve, then, you know, well, the counselor's only got to deal with two hundred folks if you've got an equal distribution between all your grades, and that's not so bad. But if I can throw in the pre-K numbers, it makes it sound like, oh, we got to throw a lot more money into this, you know what I'm saying? So, I'm concerned about the vagueness in the presentation, but in particular, what are we really talking about in terms of the counseling? Because that itself is a very open-ended concept for most of us.
Yeah, and I will attempt to answer this for you.
Okay.
There are three, oh, I'm sorry, there are three professional support categories that we look at in the schools, school psychologists, social workers, and school counselors. And you're right, there may be some overlap. I can't tell you exactly where that overlap would occur. With the school counselors, we kind of define what those roles are for the school counselor and administrative rules. The school psychologist's rules, administrative rules, also define what their role is, what they do in schools. And if our friends who are from special education were here, they would probably be able to address that, because I know that they do sit in and do the IETs. And they probably get into more deeper types of counseling with students who have very severe emotional disturbances or trauma or issues. School counselors can probably be that first line of identification of the need to get these students either to a school psychologist or a school social worker. School social worker probably is working more with community resources for students, and that may be a part of what a school psychologist does, too. So, they are three very different classifications of professional support personnel in the school. And to contrast what each one does, those roles would take us some work to do that, to today we'll pull that together for you. So, today, I can't sit here and tell you where they overlap and contrast. There was an issue probably ten, twelve years ago about school social workers acting as school counselors, and stepping into that role, and really, schools using school social workers as school counselors. And again, that was outside of what the administrative rules would call for.
I'm a little reluctant to start this, but I don't, I mean, if I can just say this respectfully to the audience, this, we'll find a way to, as the board decides in a moment here, on how to interact with the, our guests. But the typical rules are that that's why we have public participation, and we don't engage directly. But let's think about that. That might be more appropriate than having people wait till public participation. I just, but I'm just trying to say also, we want to be respectful to, I'm thinking out loud about the context of these decisions as they were made in 2010, based on a stakeholder group that isn't here, correct?
Correct.
And so, I just caution in that respect, not that things change, you know? And if we need to, just the point that Nancy made, and the way that Flora adapted and said what we can do in our review, these are good things to be flexible about and to adapt to. But I'm just thinking out loud about how we start kind of a new tradition. It doesn't mean we can't for a given item, and probably would make sense today, since there seems to be so much interest for people to not wait for public participation. But I don't know that I want to start it right in the middle, until the board has their chance to react, okay? So, sir, if you don't mind making a note on what you were just thinking, and then we get to that part after the board engages, we'll hear you out. Does that sound good to the board? Yeah, we have done that, so.
I thought that's what we wanted to do, a committee at the whole, or we could be more than four, maybe.
Okay, cool, that sounds great. So, but I thought let the board have their shot at this first, and then we'll open that up. I think it was, I think it was Mary Ann, and then Eileen.
Thank you again for calling your board here. I'm, I have no memory of what we did, what we did. What I'm a little concerned about is the fact that we're asking counselors to do some personal and emotional counseling, and with their career guidance. Are we requiring them to take any psychological courses at all?
Yeah, that is a part of their program, that they do look at the social development of the child and take courses in that. And they probably do have some psychology courses in addition to the counseling courses.
And then, Eileen, please.
Actually, this is a continuum that I remember very well, from first coming on the board in 1998, and wondering at that point, I think that there was about a four hundred fifty or five hundred student per counselor ratio, and wondering what that meant for the future. And now, I'm looking at it as a continuum that had us until the early 2000s, a state that was convinced that there was no need for any job training, except what you could get when you started working for a corporation, or anything more than maybe a community college degree, or the, you know, the fancy schmancy people going on to college and getting an engineering or, actually, we were just talking about STEM, so I'm not sure that's even viable, but having some sort of a baccalaureate degree, and then, you know, going on in some corporation. So, now we've got a situation in Michigan where we have no counselors, or very few, who can service children to figure out what their lives are going to be like post-K-12. And I just did a search for both the National College, Michigan College Access Network and the Access Program, and neither one, unless you ask for those entities, comes up. If you do something, I did four searches on things like, you know, counseling, comma, career, comma, college, comma, and nothing comes up. So, we're not integrated, you know? We haven't moved in a way yet that allows the child to get some of the benefits of these programs that we know are good, and they're not getting it in their school. So, there's no value being placed by Michigan right now on the cherry commission's goals for post-secondary training or college. There's nothing that integrates K-12 right now with the counseling aspects that have to happen to move kids along in that area. And you can't get it on the net, which is pretty archaic. You know, we just need to think that through, because you should be able, I was part of the board of your child, which was doing this, trying to come up with a system that allowed a child to go through and instantly start getting information on what they had to do. The network's information is excellent, so is M C A C, M A C. We know what you mean. Yeah, it's there, but you can't get to it on the net. You can't do a search that pulls it up, not easily. You get Phoenix first, and you get a bunch of others. So, there, we need to take a holistic look at this, because that's what the board is supposed to be doing. And I can't tell with budget cuts and the dire situation I remember in 1998, whether we'll ever move back, unless we have people in the schools who provide something that really works for kids, and unless districts decide that that's their priority. It's an outcome-based situation where children are going on to something afterwards. And I don't know how to get there, but I suspect that we need to do some more talking on this, because what's here right now is not producing graduates that districts feel compelled to hire. They're not reprioritizing their focus. I don't know if they will, either. I don't know if you ramp up our requirements for other state graduates and for in-state graduates to have more ability to hook kids up with what's on the net. Hi, I can't do this for you, but here's the information, come back to me when you've done these five exercises, and we'll talk. You know, it just isn't there. So, there's something more that we need to talk about, because solving it this way isn't going to, I mean, we've got to do something, but I don't, and thank you, Cassandra, for making sure that this came to our attention. It's, Kathleen, you've been on the board the longest of all of us, and I don't know what these ratios were, but I remember it was at least four fifty or five hundred back then.
It was always higher than everybody else's.
And the other state, yeah. But what you think about it, the history of the state, you didn't have to do this. You didn't have to get a college degree, you didn't have to go on to community college, and Ford or General Motors or somebody, the building trades gave you the training that you needed. Now, how do we fix this?
You know, Nancy, just thinking out loud, one thing about the average is that there are districts, even with our financial issues, that by definition are less than six hundred, if six hundred's the average. And then there's also some that are probably at a thousand to one, almost, again, by definition. So, a little bit of this, one of the components of this might be for the board to encourage districts that this is one of the last resorts, even in difficult budget times. Because it's hard, having been a local superintendent, I can remember times where it's very difficult for a local board to resist seven hundred people showing up on a given issue and not restore it in the budget. And there's very rarely seven hundred people showing up to protect ratios on counselors. And so, the more that we can help give ammunition, if that's the right word, to local boards that make these decisions, even when we do the deficit elimination plans, it's very interesting to me that some of them in the most desperate situations are holding on to what they think are appropriate ratios, and that's, they're not giving that up. And, but anyway, Nancy, I think you were next.
As I listen to this conversation, we're focusing on high school and college preparation, which is important, there's no doubt that it's important. However, if we do not get students to the point of being able to even consider, quote, "college preparation" or even "graduation," then we have lost them before that's even a part of what they do, what they're trying to do. So, my question is, do we also anticipate, expect, teach for, train for counselors to also help students navigate the education system as they go through school? And I'm reminded this year, because I have, again, and I will unabashedly use my own examples, because they're what I have, students that are now going from an elementary or magnet school level to a middle school and high school level, and the challenges they have of changing from one system to another, where they're A and B students one year, and they're D and E students the next year. It is difficult for a classroom teacher to focus on a single student that is having a problem, or multiple students. And my first thought when I experienced these is, well, have you talked to your counselor? And then, knowing what the counseling ratios are, I think, okay, maybe, but what could they do? But I'm wondering, does this, do you anticipate, or do you see that this program or certification or master's program, does it, does it train our counselors for this, these kinds of situations, well, kids who are having difficulty navigating the system long before they ever get ready for career in college? Is that what you anticipate?
I don't know that I can definitively, I don't know that I can definitively answer that, but I can say that most of the programs are K-12 programs. And, you know, and how, and I know they have coursework on working with students at all levels. I know they do the internships out in the districts, they have to have that. Also, taking a look at how districts have rearranged their schools, their school buildings, and that they can afford to continue to do that. Some of them have standalone fifth, sixth grade buildings, and keeping students within, you know, certain age ranges together. Even transitioning to high school, they have kind of an orientation for students passing from middle school to secondary, and keeping them together and working with the counselors to do that. They may have, in a bigger, larger school district or building, they may have a wing of that building that's just ninth grade. You know, so I think that those kinds of transitions, I think, is they know that it's something that's needed in the schools to make the transition from middle school to high school, so.
So, it may not be, Nancy, it may not be only the counselor responsible for that, because there are some of these structural things, but I think that's, I mean, maybe something that we take a look at, because especially that ninth grade, when we know that's the, the eighth and the ninth grade is so pivotal. Like I said, I don't think we can put it all on the counselor, but it is, it's an interesting thing for us to take a look at.
Beatrice.
And let me ask, let me ask this in a better way. I clearly didn't really articulate well enough when I was trying to figure out. And all of this is true, all of this is very good, and I've witnessed in several school districts where they group grades together to try and make certain that they have those needs of that grade level, that age level, really being addressed. In the test that this will result from these standards that we're now talking about, looking at, that hasn't been changed in twenty years, will some of that test reflect those needs that counselors have to be able to address that I've just described?
It will address whatever the standards are, you know, what we have in the standards.
And that's what I'm asking, are the standards specific enough such that that would be picked up? And I don't know, I can't, I don't.
Private bearing testing people, I don't know.
Then I would recommend that you at least consider that, because I think that that's something that counselors do need to be able to address. And parents don't know where else to go, and too often, the kids that really need it are not in a financial situation to be able to go out and get private counseling services for their students, and so they depend on the school.
Beatrice, did you have something to add to that?
Well, actually, Dr. Shaw, over here for Brad, everything, he wanted to make some comments.
Okay. Okay, we'll do that in just a moment, then. I, what I'm trying to do is respect that Floris, folks she works with, may have something to add to that. And then we'll get, as I said to the audience, Marty, by the way, I asked to be Phil Donahue, for those of you my age, and he's got a microphone, and in a little bit, we'll pass it around here. But I think Richard was next, and then Kath, we'll go from there.
I just want to comment, you know, there's a form and there's a function. And we sometimes identify a function with a form. So, the school guidance counselor, who is described in the materials that we've received, specializes in, you know, career and college readiness and that sort of thing. That function may easily be taken over by other individuals, depending on how your school is structured. Traditionally, your guidance counselor came into play when your students moved from a self-contained classroom, and a teacher who had them six hours a day and got to know them very well, to where you had teachers who were specialized, and now the guidance counselor is supposed to help the child pull all the pieces together. And now the guidance counselor is supposed to help the child pull all the pieces together and then with tests and then specialized knowledge, well, you should think about this career, think about that direction, et cetera, et cetera. As school structures diversify, we're going to find where the expectations of a guidance counselor may not fit all of these structures. And in fact, we may find structures that, at least locally, meet those needs in an equal or superior fashion. So I guess I'm saying that to suggest that because the ratio of counselors to students is high or low, doesn't really tell us anything about the function. Is the function being met or isn't it? Or whether this particular form of guidance counselor is going to be effective in the future. It may have been effective 20 years ago when the last test was made, but is it still effective today? Or should we be thinking about another form to meet this function? And part of that, too, is what can local school districts afford? Maybe we need to think in terms of someone with counseling that combines the social work, community resources, and guidance so that a district can hire, so a high school can hire one person rather than having to meet, having to hire three people, a counselor, a psychologist, and a social worker. I'm just thinking out loud. Because the structures that we adopt and endorse will help or hinder diversity in educational delivery systems. And they also have ramifications for what is done outside the public system as well. So I wish I had some handy answers. I'm just opening up some more issues, I guess.
Thank you. This is meant to be an open discussion, so that's good.
Well, I think, Richard, you're touching on the fact, we've put so much on the plate of the school counselor because they are dealing with emotional academics. So, I mean, they're dealing with so much that that's an interesting thing to continue to think about, is do we need to really look at that role and hone it in so that it's not so diversified? That if we aren't going to be able to change the ratio, let's just say that's the case, then do we need to redefine that role so we get the leverage out of those positions that we can? But I do think there probably is some overlap with the psychologists in the school and the social workers, who tend to focus more on the students with special needs, but it doesn't have to be.
Kathleen, please.
Yeah, well, I wanted to talk about the same thing because I think social workers deal more with some of the, they also deal with emotional issues and health issues.
Can you speak up to any, I'm sorry.
Pardon? I'm talking to this thing.
Yeah, but speak louder.
Okay, how's that?
Perfect.
Good. Now I forgot what I was going to say. But anyway, the whole function of the three, Richard's point is a good point with the three different fields. But I've talked to school social workers who, at early ages, especially with girls, as they become, go and mature into puberty, they sometimes don't know what's happening to them. And the social workers have really helped them understand what's happening to their bodies. Their parents or their mothers are not able to explain this to them for some reason or don't explain it to them. Anyway, that kind of thing, I don't know that the counselor has to do that. Maybe we should withdraw some of those requirements that they give that kind of counseling. And they concentrate more on the career and college, the educational aspect, the academics and their futures, but not the emotional should be with somebody else. That's one possibility. But I've also been in elementary schools where they've had counselors. In Detroit, they usually didn't have counselors in elementary schools. They couldn't afford them. So some of those kids need social workers or psychologists to help them. But I don't, there's so many discrepancies and disparities between the urban schools, as I see them, and some of the suburban schools, who have many more, they had more resources and they had more counselors. So the high schools, when you talk about K-12, if they don't have the, they could put more counselors in middle schools and high schools because the middle schools really need it a lot, I think. The kids really need help. But then they get to the college part, and this whole business of FAFSA, for instance, the applications for loans and grants and stuff, is so difficult. It's so involved and so complicated. Parents with college educations have difficulty filling these things out. So people who don't really need a lot of help. So they have to figure out some way of having classes or something for the pair, for the families or the students, how to fill these things out. They've got a tremendous job, but all that should be somehow in the curriculum that they have to take in order to become a counselor because it's the nuts and bolts that they go to need. I agree with Nancy that it was, we were a little bit vague. They were good because we didn't have anything to go on, but as you say, things change. So we have to be more specific and say they have to learn how to do these various functions. I would think the nuts and bolts of the job as well as the, and take away all the emotional and stuff, give that to somebody else.
Okay. Do we want to do the Phil Donahue part for a while bit here?
Yes.
And Marty, maybe you start with the gentleman who had his hands up. And if you could all identify yourselves, because I know there's also folks that are in the profession. I know there's also some folks that have a stake in this, that are in private industry. And I think we should understand who's who.
My name is Dr. Shawn Bolzma, and I am the president of the Michigan School Counselor Association, and thank you for the opportunity to address you. As these questions come up, I have a tendency to want to provide some of the information in terms of psychologists, social workers, and school counselors. What is the overlap? The State Board of Education has mental health policy in schools and does indicate that those three positions are included in that State Board of Education policy on mental health in schools. But that is an overlap. Generally, the social worker and the psychologist are in multiple schools, whereas school counselors are looking to provide preventative services as well as some responsive services as they come up because that's the professional who's in the school at the time. Generally, a school counselor, unless it's at the elementary level, that's the one place where I see perhaps middle school, school counselors in multiple buildings sharing positions. But that overlap, to me, is, as you had mentioned, oftentimes, special needs, social workers and psychologists providing services to only some students, whereas school counselors provide services to all students. And you had mentioned the guidance curriculum, a curriculum. That definitely is part of a comprehensive program that is on the Michigan Department of Education website, a guidance curriculum whereby school counselors who serve as the head of an advisory council and identifying an advisory council in school systems then lead them through putting a program into place so that the focus and the form and function is no longer on the person, but it's on a program in schools. So that if a person leaves, the program remains behind. So I really want to emphasize, it's not so much a person in the role, but the program. I want to say, too, I don't believe in being a guardian of the status quo. As a professional association, we're looking along with you and struggling with these same ways to support students in success in career development, personal social development. And in addition, that third area is through individual student planning and career planning. I apologize for that. I'm trying to get it out to you. So personal social development, academic development, and career development. Those are the three areas that school counselors look to support in all students. And so that's important to clarify. And there was one other piece that I wanted to share. Someone had mentioned this issue of transitioning. It is part of the standards that school counselors implement developmental approaches to assist all students, so there's that emphasis again, and caregivers at points of educational transition, home to elementary school, elementary to middle, middle to high school, high school to post-secondary education, and career options. So that is clarified in the standards as part of school counselors' training and how to implement that. So thank you for the opportunity to address it.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make a comment? Trish? Didn't see you back there.
Thank you. Superintendent Plant, again, members of the board. My name is Trisha Renner, and I represent the College Board. Can you hear me?
No.
Can you come closer? Yeah, we're having a hard time hearing. Thank you.
I don't think that mic is really...
It's not up high.
It's on, but it's turned off.
Is that better? Well, I was trained as an elementary school teacher, so I can get all the way up and be on to the state Capitol if I really need to enunciate and articulate here. It's my pleasure to be here today to support the...
Would you repeat who you are and what you do?
And I am Trisha Renner with the College Board, representing the College Board. The College Board supports counseling pre-service programs which provide counselors with the knowledge and skills needed to address the eight components of college and career readiness counseling, which include college aspiration, academic planning for college and career readiness, enrichment and extracurricular and enhancement activities, career and college exploration and the selection process, college and career assessments, college affordability planning, college and career admissions process, and the transition from high school to college. Through our office of, our National Office of School Counselor Advocacy, we have worked to develop these eight components of college counseling, and we have also recently released our national survey of school counselors. We are in the process of preparing a Michigan-specific brief as a result of this national survey, which will be released through the Michigan, through MACAC, Michigan Association of College Admissions Counselors, more letters, sorry, everyone, on April 19. But I wanted to share briefly one finding with you from this survey, which was that the majority of counselors in Michigan indicate a desire for increased training in the two areas of college and career readiness and closing the achievement gap. So in conclusion, the College Board has a number of resources, data, reports, and professional expertise that we wish to offer to the state of Michigan as you address these issues. We're very pleased to be able to partner with you to ensure that all students have the knowledge and tools they need to successfully transition from post-secondary to college and/or careers. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else at this time? Okay.
Patrick.
Good morning. I'm Patrick O'Connor. I'm a past president of the National Association for College Admission Counseling and a past president of the Michigan Association for College Admission Counseling. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today.
What's your current role, sir?
Currently, I am vice chair of the Government Relations Advisory Committee for Michigan ACAC. I'm also a practicing school counselor.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to talk today about the issue of college and career readiness. In addition to the information that Trisha and College Board have presented, there's also some information that came out last year from Education Trust indicating this is for young adults, that the degree of support in the transition to career and college readiness has been significantly under-supported. When we look at numbers such as students responding to counselors helping you decide what school was right for you, about 67% of young adults feel that school counselors did a poor or fair job in that area. That's a pretty standard response rate for areas like financial aid and other issues as well. So the need is pretty significant. Certainly to sort of echo the concerns that have been brought forth this morning, the members of Michigan ACAC, which are high school counselors and post-secondary professionals, and our primary job focus of the association is to assist students to a successful transition to life after high school and college. The concern among the members of our association basically is focused on vagueness as well. In looking at much of the coursework our new members who have just graduated in the last couple of years have received, they then come into the work and say, boy, I'm just not ready for this. The proposal that MACAC brought forth and that you have copies of really speaks to that issue. There's a need for greater depth in terms of training for counselors to really make a meaningful difference in the lives of students as they make college decisions. We're in a position, as many of you know, that the number of students applying for college continues to increase and the number of applications they submit continues to increase. That's excellent news on one front because it certainly speaks to the fact that students are interested in college. Part of the challenge, however, is that that means there's more competition for fewer slots. There are no colleges that are expanding at this point. So the need for accurate information and really for developing a K-12 curriculum in college awareness and college culture becomes more important than ever. And the reason that MACAC has brought forth these proposed changes simply reflects the need for greater depth in terms of counselor training in that area. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. John, Cassandra, Nancy, I'm going down the list here.
I just wanted to say, I appreciate very much hearing from the professionals here, and thank you for the opportunity. And I was, it wasn't only because my son's counselor, who's uncourteously quiet, John Boschovin, back there from Unity High, holds the fate of my son, Murphy Senior, in his hand. But actually, I think he's already had to write his glowing letters of recommendation for Murphy. But John and others of you do incredible work, and I wanted to thank you for the work you do and also for helping us understand how we can improve and do better to support you and this important work at Counselor. So I just want to say thank you for coming.
Cassandra, please.
I would like to echo that. Thank you all for coming. I think that we may be hearing from more of you at Public Comment, which we appreciate and welcome. Just to follow up on one thing that you said about the program review, I appreciate the fact that, you know, we can include that in the information that we receive from the colleges and universities. I am a little concerned about that, though, just in the fact that, you know, if it just becomes a checkoff, then it might become one tiny piece of one class. And I think what we're saying is it really needs to be more in-depth than that. And I appreciate the fact that it's in the standards and it's, but I think we really need to make it known to the colleges and universities that this is very, very important because we really do have to, you know, we're doing more with less, but the end result has to be getting young people into post-secondary education if they so choose. And then finally, I just want to say that Nancy and I kind of whispered back and forth about the Michigan College Access Network and the fact that we would like to discuss that as part of the legislative committee because it really is something that we need to continue in the state. One of the things that they do, I actually sit on one of their boards, and one of the most interesting things I think that they do is they take young people who have just graduated from college themselves and put them into high schools, and they become mentors for high school students to then understand, what was your experience when you went to college? How did you get to college? What was the financing like? And they become mentors for these young people. And if we lose that, we're losing a really good resource. So we really need to make sure that we're letting the legislature know that we think that this is a priority for the state.
Thank you. Nancy?
I'd like to clarify a couple of things. First of all, I want to thank people for coming and hope that we do hear more at Public Comment. I have a great appreciation and admiration for those who take on the daunting task of being a counselor in a large school, a small school, a middle-sized school, whatever size school it is. It's a daunting task. My major concern is and will always be that in our policymaking, we provide clarity, quality, and high standards that allow those people going into those professions to clearly understand what's expected of them and what it is the capacity they need to have in order to meet those expectations. So that's one of my purposes. Cassandra, the standards do not clarify what it is we're talking about here. In fact, if you look at the standards, one of, under 1.3.4, three, it says, "Conduct career and education planning, including post-secondary options such as college selection and school..." selection and school-to-work transitions." That is so vague that it could be as much as saying, you could go to college if you want to, end of story. And we can't afford to have our students believe that's the end of the story. So, that's why I'm so thrilled that you have agreed to look at that in terms of how you address this with your colleges, to clarify for us what that really means, because I'm sure that that wasn't what you meant. I think, too, that if, and I hate to say it, but if it's in the test, they will teach it. And so, then our opportunity, since we cannot change right now these standards, our opportunity lies in this upcoming test. If we clarify what our expectations are of colleges to be able to present and provide students who are becoming counselors through that test information, then I believe it will be taken up by those colleges and universities, and that's my hope. Secondly, when it comes to those transition points, and I appreciate so much your talking about those transition points, one of the transition points that was not traditionally there, but I believe we need to make certain is understood, is that with the advent of magnet schools that go K-7, entry into middle school becomes eighth grade. Our previous thought was that we, that entry, that transition point for traditional middle school goers is at this fifth and sixth grade level. And when you have kids going seventh, eighth grade, most teachers, no, I won't even say most, many teachers have, I don't think intentionally, I think it's that you're so used to kids who have been there for two years, that by the time they're in eighth grade, it's kind of like, yeah, they already know what this system's like. They don't need to worry, I don't need to worry about that, you know, they know what's going on, but they don't. And so, that transition piece needs not only to be at fifth, sixth grade, but also at seventh, eighth, to acknowledge that magnet school to one year of middle school, get it or lose it, and then you're in high school. And that is a tough transition for students to make. So, I'm hoping that somehow we can have that conversation, that colleges can have that conversation with their potential counselors. And my last comment is, are all of these things that we're talking about, within your standards, you have three levels of counseling, so to speak, which are, if I can go back here to look at this, we look at them in terms of school counselor endorsement, and T, preliminary employment authorization to work as a school counselor, and school counselor license. Are all of these things that we're talking about in this test, in these standards, are those applicable to all three of these levels, or only some of these levels?
They all take the same test, and the clarification that the school counselor endorsement is given to a teacher, a person who holds a valid teaching certificate, they complete the school counselor program, and they are then endorsed as a school counselor. And legislation that was revised, I think, or amended in 1995, '96 regarding school counselors, they put in where a person with a bachelor's degree could get a school counselor license. So, that's where we ended up getting a school counselor license. That's when people coming in from out of state, as well as people in Michigan, who want to get that license, and opposed to the teaching certificate with school counseling. But they do the same program.
Okay, that's good.
And the pre-authorization, preliminary authorization for those folks have done almost everything, they completed all the coursework, and they have their internship to do, so they can go in and do that internship and be paid while they're doing it.
Is that internship, is that akin to a traditional teaching, student-teacher situation?
It's longer. It's generally a year that they're in internship for that program.
Okay.
So, it will be more full-time.
Thank you.
Other board? Elaine, please. Kathleen, please.
This isn't going to be very helpful to the staff, I don't think, but I want to challenge MACAC, since they have nothing else to do with their 650 student-to-teacher ratio. There just seems to me to be a giant hole here. I bet on researching, which I shouldn't have been, I apologize if I didn't hear, but I did searches for things like, I want to go to college, counseling Michigan, I want to go to, I want graphic arts training after high school, and you can't get it on the internet. So, I would love to see MACAC take their members and figure out what resources are viable that you want your kids to be sent to, to take that first burden off of your counselors, and at least get the search mechanisms lined up so that Michigan can get to MCAN, which they're not able to do. I mean, at least when I said I want to go to college, counseling Michigan, I was able to get to something called Know How To Go, which was good, but it's not where we want to be. So, I don't know what else the board has to do on this issue, and this is not, obviously, this is only one leg of several that counselors have to do, but it's an important one for what we want to see accomplished in the state, and I don't see any other way to get there right now without talking about it more. Thanks.
Kathleen, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, my daughter-in-law is a guidance counselor in California, and she ended up working with foster children as sort of a specialty. And I've gone out there and arrived at their home at midnight, and she's on the phone with a student, trying to calm a student down, maybe a suicidal student. She was working with him like 24 hours a day, it was really amazing. So, I, and I think guidance counselors have tremendous responsibilities and tremendous jobs. We have to give them the tools. One of the things I think I heard you say, Flor, was that colleges could have, they could have an elective course on how to do college admissions. Seems to me that it's going to have to be required. I mean, I don't see, that's a major function for counselors. This, as I said before, we're trying to encourage kids to go to higher education, and if we take away the resources, it's just, we're going back counter to what we want to do. It doesn't make any sense. We have a tremendous job to do with the legislature, it seems to me. And sometimes, we're going to have to mention the fact that maybe we need, instead of having every tax program be revenue-neutral, it erases a little bit more money, so we can provide for these services. People want the services. Somehow, we have to explain to them that its services cost money. Nobody wants to mention that. I want to mention it.
I'm not sure what you mean, no one wants to mention it. In fact, it's a good lead into our next item, probably. You're mentioning it, and I think we should.
Would you like to make one quick comment?
Sure, Dan.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. Could you raise your hand next time, please?
I lost there, but it's so really, really interesting conversation. I had trouble carrying the public comment, and so my apologies, in case I'm being redundant or repetitive. Really interesting, fascinating stuff, and, you know, I'm struck by how difficult it is, and what it means really, to, kind of in our governance role, to be good in the policymaking space around the various needs that have surfaced during this conversation. And I don't have any answers to that. It just strikes me that this is really difficult stuff, in that counseling seems like an input, but we don't really have an accountability mechanism for measuring the output, for the outcome of that, although we all, I think, tie to some counseling to college admission, retention, that kind of a thing, but that's not really something that we measure as a state at this point. So, it's an interesting kind of, you know, placeholder for what I imagine will be a future in conversation for us. My quick question is, and maybe it's a comment, we don't even have to answer it now, is, when we identify beating the odds schools, I wonder if, and so, and I'm thinking about, so obviously, some of these professional associations are networking counselors so that they can share best practices and improve their craft and practices and so on. I'm wondering, though, what if any learning school leaders are doing around effective use of counseling in their schools? This is a quick example, I'm wondering if the beating the odds schools, those school leaders, as they're networked, or as others are networked with those leaders, if part of what they discuss, or have the opportunity to discuss, is, you know, how are you using your counselors? How many do you have? What is your ratio of counselors to students at your schools? Is that part of your secret sauce, if you will, you know, that's helping you beat the odds?
Very interesting. Thank you. That's, well, can I suggest that it's obvious we want to minimally continue the conversation and maybe rethink some of, even though they've been recent, doesn't mean we can't rethink those standards. And unless there's another suggestion, which I'm open to, obviously, we could think a little bit about it as staff, bring it to agenda planning next time, or is there more concrete follow-up that you might have in mind right now? Sounds good. Because some of this will, I think, fit into another umbrella. When I heard the one speaker talk about how prevalent it is that counselors aren't feeling prepared by the time they actually get out there, I think it's fair to say we're seeing more and more of that with every teacher not feeling prepared. In fact, we just in-house fine-tuned something the other day, where, with no malice at all, I mean, this probably worked for a period of time, but where we were actually asking kids their last year in college how they felt prepared technologically, and the answers, they felt pretty good about it. Well, we're going to change that to the next year. I mean, I think it might be very different when they're actually out in a classroom and saying, do we feel like we are able to integrate technology in a way that's appropriate for today? So, maybe there's some of this, that's why we probably need a little think time on how this in its own right needs more thinking, conversation, and possible action, and then also, does it integrate with some of the other issues that we've been dealing with? If that sounds okay? Comfortable with that for now? Okay. Well, thanks. Thanks, everyone in the audience, too. And Flor, and Sally, thanks so much for your work on this. I have a few comments on the next one, but I think it's more appropriate that I turn it right over to John first, and, well, you know what, I'll at least do this...